We are, I know we're all enjoying socializing. You guys are a big social clique, right? It's just like you haven't seen each other in at least two weeks, right? Anyhow, I'll call the meeting to order. And first of all, I'd like to welcome our newest member, John Benson, who doesn't seem like a new member because we just know him so well. Anyhow, and he was also on your committee. But anyhow, I'm going to do, I have introduced you comments and then I'll turn it over to the people who are going to be doing the most of the talking. The purpose of this meeting is twofold. First, to introduce and thank the Town Manager Search Committee and formally receive from the TMSC its final report about the eight-month search process, including the candidates the TMSC is recommending for the selectmen's consideration. Second, to introduce MRI consultant Bob Mercier, who will walk the Board of Selectmen through the schedule and procedure for the interviews on Saturday, the decision next Monday, and what will follow thereafter. We have received a few resident comments asking for more time for residents to do research, excuse me, on the candidates and offer comments about the candidates. As I explained in one email, numerous communities are vying for a limited number of good candidates, so the selectmen must act expeditiously if the town is to have good options from which to choose the next town manager. We also don't want to waste all the fine work that the TMSC invested to identify the finalists. The Board is well aware that public input is important, but for the reasons I just explained, we don't have the option of extending our candidate evaluation and selection process. As it is, the annual town meeting just concluded, already has delayed our starting candidate interviews. Between tonight, when all of us will learn who the finalist candidates are, and next Monday evening, when the selectmen will discuss the candidates and expect to make a selection, residents will have time to do their own research, including by attending the public interview sessions on Saturday in this room, and offer comments by email or at Monday's meeting. The abbreviated schedule might not be to everyone's liking, but the time should be sufficient for motivated citizens to weigh in. So with that, I will turn to Pat Clifford, who is the chairman of the TMSC, to, I guess, introduce your members and then do your thing. Thank you, Pat.
Well, thank you all for moving right along with this process. As soon as you finish town meeting, it's above and beyond to go all the nights you've gone and then settle down to do this, and we appreciate it. I will introduce the members of my committee. I think most of them are well-known. Charlie Cadlock, who most of you saw at town meeting. Steve Noon, you saw at town meeting. Sahana Prohet. Mike Gowing, who spoke at town meeting. Nancy Tavernier, who spoke at town meeting. And Mr. Benson. So the two members of our committee are out-of-town, Shuan Kong and Mary Ann Ashton. And I will take a moment of what I told my committee many times was chair's privilege and to thank you for putting this committee together. They were a dream team. Whenever anything needed to be done, somebody stepped forward and got it done, got it done on time. It was a terrific experience, and I'm grateful for having had that opportunity. So now you have in front of you our report. We've, and what I'd like to do, if it's all right with you, is just read the executive summary so that the members of the public who are listening here and see the same information you have. Now, just going to go right from the top. "The Town Manager Search Committee voted unanimously to send the following slate of candidates for consideration by the Board of Selectmen. These are presented in alphabetical order. We did not rank the candidates. Joseph Colangelo, the Town Manager of Shelburne, Vermont; Stephen Crane, the Town Manager of Long Meadow, Massachusetts; Lisa Hemmerly, the Director of Economic Development for the City of Cambridge, Massachusetts; Shawn Hendricks, the Town Manager of Killingley, Connecticut; and John Mangiarati, the Deputy Town Manager, Hanover, Massachusetts." We do note, in reference to your comment, Janet, about the perishability of this pool, that Mr. Colangelo just negotiated and accepted a position in another community. So you will actually have four candidates to work with. Okay, so. "Selected after a comprehensive search, developed in response to the committee charge, this slate offers a diverse group of local government professionals who meet the standards of excellence expected by both the community and the staff. In 22 meetings over an eight-month period, TMSC created a four-phase process that sought to maximize input from our stakeholders and minimize the risks inherent in recruitment." And we detail those in the report I've given to you. "We also chose, after significant debate and reflection, to engage a recruitment consultant, Municipal Resources, Inc., on a limited basis to assist us with candidate identification. TMSC retained complete responsibility for all other aspects of our work, but we believe that the partnership with MRI will enhance the entire process by providing the Board of Selectmen with continuity as you undertake your role as the appointing authority." And Bob Mercier worked with us hand and glove and with his colleagues to get this search honed down and as efficient as possible. And finally, the committee had unrestricted access to staff during this process and benefited from both their professional experience as well as their accessibility and their attentiveness to our concerns, whether it was booking a meeting or producing a report, building a website. Everybody stepped forward to help. In particular, we thanked Town Manager Steve Willdo, Executive Assistant Leester Tommel, and the Human Resources Director Mary Ann Fleckner. Their doors were always open to us. So with that, you have four people. I'm just going to quickly explain the four phases that we went through. The detail, you can get in here. But Phase One was essentially to assess the market. We spent about, I'd say about eight weeks working on that. We met with Town Council in our first meeting so that we had a clear understanding of the open meeting law and the public records law and how they apply to searches. It's a very specific set of requirements. We met with a lot of people, including the Town Manager, who gave us a great deal of insight. And we learned that it was not unusual to use a consultant in a process like this. So then we went to Phase Two, which was public outreach. It was a very successful endeavor. We had a survey which had many, many, many electronic and even some paper responses. And all those results are on our webpage, if you care to look at them. We did, in this room, a public outreach session. Some of you came and talked about your concerns about the next town manager. Again, very helpful information from the community itself. So that was our objective there. We wanted an open and inclusive process. And I think that public outreach phase was probably where we learned the most. The third phase is, I'll call it prerecruitment because there's a lot of work that has to be done. And the addendums to this report include some of that. We obviously had to develop an advertisement. We had to develop a challenge statement, leadership challenge, so that we could identify the candidate. You'll all be interested to know that one of the first things we learned is that town managers don't have job descriptions. They have a charter, and they have expectations. And we had to synthesize a lot of input from a lot of people to get to the point where we could define what Acton needed in a town manager. And that was the point in time where we also put out an RFP and recruited a consulting firm. So MRI worked with us in this prerecruitment phase. And then four, Phase Four, we just executed the plan. The ads went out, and you can read all about where we put them. The responses came in. We evaluated the responses, called them down. We had 57 to begin with. We called that down to 17 for an essay question portion of the recruitment. One of the candidates in the 17 left the pool because he had another job. We evaluated the essay questions, called it down to nine, 10, 11, 12 people, I guess, somewhere in there. And then finally, the eight that we actually interviewed. And this was all done over about a four-week period? Yeah, about four weeks. We went through everything pretty quickly. Bob had to sit through some really long meetings. These guys have incredible stamina. So that's how it unwound. The information is here in the report. If you can't find it in the report, it's on the website. We've given you that site in the report. And we'd be more than happy to answer questions. Please feel free. These guys, they have all this information in their head. Feel free to ask, and thank you again very much.
Thank you very much, Pat. And thank you again to all the committee members, including the folks who aren't here tonight. As I mentioned to the TMSC, when Katie and I met with you during your very brief open session before you were about to go into executive session to, I guess, screen the final eight candidates, this committee came together. It was really the five selectmen making suggestions of members. And I just went through and I picked out all the overlapping votes or whatever suggestions and put together a committee of people who obviously enjoyed a lot of respect, had reputations for very strong work ethic, very strong engagement in the community. Many have been in town for a very, very long time. You have the long-term perspective of the town. And also, they all had reputations for being collaborative, being able to work with other people. It was not all people in the same sort of mindset. It was a real diverse group. And that was all, it all came together really nicely. Fortunately, it came together quickly because my colleagues all made very good suggestions. So, and then we just really, I think we were very comfortable handing it off to this committee, trusting you all to do a very good job, which was important because there was no way we were going to be sort of looking over your shoulder and second-guessing everything. We had more than enough to do. And frankly, looking at your meeting schedule, I was shocked at times to see, didn't they just meet last week? And see, you have not just one meeting sometimes in a week, but sometimes two. And I just was profoundly grateful. And it's not schadenfreude. I was really grateful not to be on your committee because you had just a terrible meeting schedule. It was like the worst meeting schedule I think I've seen in a long time. But I'm sure that my colleagues share my deep appreciation for all of your work and making, to some extent, making our job a little bit easier. And here's Mr. Kong coming in so late. No. Anyhow, do other, do board members have comments, questions, anything to contribute? If not, I mean, you can say kudos if nothing else, nothing substandard. Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I was just, I don't know. Did you say that the essays are going to be available to us?
It's going to be in the packet.
Yeah, you're going to receive packets. I think Bob prepared them, which include the actual application, the essay questions that we asked them to answer, and what else was in there? The answers to the questions. So you should be able, between our report and the material you receive, get a full profile of exactly what happened.
Yeah, I just want to, I think, as Janet said, I noted it in that public portion of one of the meetings that we attended. But I just want to thank all of you again. This has been a lot of work and a lot of time and a lot of effort. And especially thanks to Pat. I think you were, when I first talked to you about being on the committee and being chair, were slightly reluctant about chair because you knew how much effort this was going to be. So thank you for taking it on and doing a really incredible job. And I know the timing for this has been a little tight for the reasons that Janet mentioned and also just an awkward timing of we were having a new, we knew that we would be doing the final part, our part of this, with a new board. And that board wouldn't, you know, be constituted until the end of town meeting. So we've tried to meet as soon as we possibly could. I mean, this was the first night. We knew we would definitely be available after we had a new board for you to present this report to. So thank you all for making this work. And I'm looking forward to the next steps and to working with MRI and Bob. And I think Bob will tell us a little bit more about what's going to be in the packets, which will be publicly available in the process on Saturday and Monday. So thank you all.
Mr. Benson, what do you have to say about the committee's work? You're going to pat yourself on the back.
It was a very special group of people. And I just wanted to thank Nancy Tavernier, who was sort of the unofficial deputy chair and note taker and minute person. And very special thanks to our chair, Pat Clifford, who really did a great job at bringing the best out of all of us and utilizing, you know, all of the talents that we had. And thank you so much, Pat.
All right, well, thank you very much. And I think we're ready to go to Phase Two. Yes, do you have a question?
Can I get a copy of the report?
Yeah, you will. You know, I don't know if there are extra paper copies, but we're going to post this online. And we know you want it, so as soon as it's online, excuse me, online, we can email it to you.
That's an extra copy? Could I have an extra copy now so I don't have to wait?
Yeah, if you'd rather have a, you know, if you don't, it's less convenient.
Okay, thank you.
No, you don't have to make copies, Randy. There's an extra copy. Don't kill more trees. All right, I'm now going to introduce Bob Mercier. And maybe we could, well, you've already sort of introduced yourself to all the members, and you know at least a couple, three of us here. So Bob, if you want to take over and explain what it is that we are going to have to do on Saturday and thereafter, that would be great.
Well, thank you so much, Madam Chair and members of the Board. First thing I will say, and I heard it echoed. I've worked with a lot of groups in my time in doing searches. This is a fascinating group, a fascinating group. And you can conclude what I mean by that at your own discretion. But really, an interesting group of folks whose only concern was to find the best people possible to bring forward for you to interview for the next town manager. So, Pat, committee, thank you. So where are we now? We have packages of the four candidates who are announced tonight. Lisa has those. We've been communicating back and forth, Lisa, with our staff. And she has done human work to help us prepare this document. It includes the cover letter that was submitted by the applicants. It includes their resumes. It includes the questions that were asked by the committee. It includes the full responses of the essay questions. It also includes, I believe, Lisa, some sample questions for you folks to take a look at in preparation for Saturday. So you'll have that all in your package, and we'll distribute that tonight. I also have the schedule of the interviews. As you know, you've posted. The chair and I and the vice chair have been communicating. You've posted a meeting for Saturday. You've posted it from 9:00 to 3:00. We have scheduled the four finalists around those hours. They have all committed to us that they will be there at the times we've assigned. And I have that scheduled with the names that I'll hand out to you tonight, so you'll have that ahead of time. The interviews will be at 9:00 o'clock, at 10:00 o'clock, at 11:00 o'clock, at 12:00 o'clock. Lisa was good enough to ask us if we want lunch. And we said yes. And at 1:00, we'll complete the final interview. You'll be done by about 2:00. And the Board is free to discuss. I'll be here. It is an open public meeting. Free to discuss what you just went through with four candidates. Or, as I think you may want to do, is take it under advisement. You've gotten fresh the questions you wanted asked from those four candidates. You may want to mull it over a little bit. You may want to sleep on it. And then come back Monday night and select of the four candidates a new town manager going forward. When I say you might want to mull it over, we've done a number of these searches throughout New England, a number of them here in Massachusetts. The appointing authorities react differently to the interview process. Some appointing authorities want to make that selection right after the interviews, that very same day. We just did this in Hanover. And Hanover made the selection right after discussing, it was a Saturday, all-day Saturday, with the candidates there. And they decided they wanted to go ahead and move forward with one of the candidates. That one candidate, by the way, as Pat suggested, was a candidate here and was hired by the town of Hanover. I want to reiterate, having said that, what your chair mentioned and what Pat mentioned. It is an extremely competitive environment out there, extremely competitive. I haven't seen it like this in all of my time in municipal government. And my sense is it's just about that time of life when people are leaving. I left four years ago, five years ago. My partner in working with the committee here in Acton was a former manager, Town Manager in Hanover, Massachusetts. And he retired a couple of years ago. So the point is, a lot of the folks that came through the process in my age bracket are leaving. And it's opening up not just manager jobs or administrative jobs. It is opening up terrific jobs. As I said, we just completed Hanover. I know Wellesley just completed, Norwood just completed. Winchester is now opening up. Bedford, Massachusetts is now opening up. There are a lot of opportunities and have been a lot of opportunities. So people are moving. The pool is restricted. We have found that, and it's an issue for the Mass Municipal Association, it's an issue for us in government, that there aren't enough people getting back into government to become administrators or managers, or for that matter, school superintendents. It's a problem. It's a problem that we're all going to face. And I am very pleased, and the chair and the vice chair met with us, and they accelerated the schedule. I apologize for the number of meetings, but they did accelerate the schedule, understanding that that's a reality out there. To the candidates you have, we are very happy with the group of candidates you have. When we first met with the committee, we talked to them about thinking outside the box a little bit. I think they did. They understood that. They understood the realities of today's environment in terms of finding your next manager. And they listened to us. There were, believe me, as Pat suggested, there were 57 applicants here. To go through that number, narrow it down, and Pat, you're right, I sat there through the narrowing down process down to 17, still with some good people in that mix. And I think we lost one or two out of that mix to other positions. And we also consulted, which is why I believe Pat and the Board of Selectmen decided that we would be a good fit for Acton. We know some things about the candidates that you would not know because we've been in the field so long. And we provided that advice to the committee. And they ultimately made decisions to narrow it down to the eight interviewees that they did interview. So the process has worked very well to date. Now we have to close the process. So Saturday. Saturday, as we meet at 9:00 o'clock, I would suggest you all show up about 8:30. So any logistical things we want to fix before we start, Lisa has said we'll have a table out front for the candidate. I prefer it up front rather than here because you folks want to talk directly to the candidate. It is the Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is your meeting to conduct. It is your meeting to manage. Madam Chair, you'll manage the meeting from the start. I would suggest, and I think, I know you well enough by now, Madam Chair, you will run the meeting well. You have to know that an hour goes by fairly quick. There will likely, again, it's up to you, there will likely be an introduction of the candidate. That person may want to tell you, or you may want to ask why. Why Acton? Why are you choosing us? And that person may want to open up with a statement. May also want a closing statement. It's really up to you to decide if you want to offer that opportunity for the individual. But that, again, is up to you. The point I'm making on that, Madam Chair, is time. If it's a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement, you're taking a little bit of time away from the questions you want to ask. I would suggest that each board member think about two to three questions that you might want to ask to the candidates. They don't all have to be the same questions, by the way. Depending on what you read in the resumes, you may go in a different direction in terms of asking a question, and that's perfectly fine because the resumes are different. And you may pick up something from work history that you'd like that candidate to explain that other candidates won't need to explain. Now, in asking questions, and we will provide you with some, as I mentioned earlier. You don't have to use those. You can think up your own questions. I will say this, in watching appointing authorities go through this process, a question from Mr. Benson, for instance, may listen and answer that Ms. Gardner may want to follow up on. That's all fine. But that may take away from the original question that Ms. Gardner thought she might want to ask. But that's fine. Again, to you, Madam Chair, it's up to you to manage this. And I'm assuming everyone's going to have a question or two that they want us. So you'll have to watch your time. And I'll be here. I'll be here just to kind of give you a warning to that effect. There are questions you cannot ask. They're pretty obvious. You can't ask about sexual orientation, race, religion, politics. You can't ask family status. Are you married, are you not? You can't ask those things. If I hear someone going in that direction, I'll advise the candidate not to answer. But I'm sure you all have heard those statements before, and you sort of have a good idea as to what you can and cannot ask. On the other hand, you can ask a question about something you may see, have seen in the public domain. Google somebody fired in 2006 from XYZ community. You can ask a question about that. Dispute with Board of Selectmen in 2008, reason for termination. You can ask a question about that. Anything in the work history that is in the public domain, you can ask those questions. And they, you know, depending on how they're going to answer them, and I know the screening committee has already gone through asking some of those very similar questions. So you can ask those as the appointing authority, just to satisfy yourself. Once, as I mentioned, once we are done, we can continue in dialogue. Madam Chair, you can say, does anybody want to ask Bob anything? Or do you have any other suggestions for us as a Board? If not, you can adjourn and come back on Monday for deliberations on the four candidates you had. And those deliberations on Monday, again, are your meeting. It's the Board of Selectmen's meeting for a specific purpose. You can just open it by saying, we're here to discuss what we did on Saturday, and that is interviewing four candidates for the next town manager here in Acton. Do I have any suggestions? And then let the conversation freely flow. And hopefully, you arrive at a consensus as to who you think the next manager should be. If you do that Monday night, let me rephrase. When you do that Monday night, Madam Chair, we will talk. You will ask the Board of Selectmen to authorize us to offer a conditional offer of employment to the selected candidate. No discussion about salary or any of that. But we want to lock down whoever that candidate would be and advise them, I will call them that night, and advise them that the Board of Selectmen has determined that you're the candidate they want to talk to by offering a conditional offer of employment. And again, subject to successful contract negotiations, subject to, and I know, Madam Chair, you had this discussion, the background check that we will do on that final candidate. It is fairly extensive. Pat and I discussed today. The Hanover manager was selected almost three weeks ago. Signed his contract this week. Background check just came in, which is about a two-week process. And I think Mr. Gould might have told you that. It's very extensive. We send a questionnaire out with very specific questions to that finalist candidate. They all know this. We've all told them what happens. We then engage resources that MRI has to do a comprehensive background check. Not only what's in your history, but some things from the financial end. We go into a very extensive background check. That's why we only do one, and we do it on the selected candidate. And once that's complete, you will get, I'm guessing, an eight-to-12-page report on the background findings that you will include in that individual's personnel file. the background findings that you will include in that individual's personnel file, if in fact, there's nothing that comes back that would force us to reconsider. In terms of contract negotiations, the chair and I have talked. It's not rocket science. You have an existing contract with a town manager. You can take a look at that. If that's what the town of Acton wants to deal with, absent salary, all the other terms and conditions, then that's the contract you offer. If you want a hybrid contract, something a little different than what your current manager has, we can negotiate that, you can negotiate that. I think we've talked, you might want to involve your counsel, certainly Mary Ann has expertise. But the contract deliberations, not that extensive, they're pretty fundamental in terms of what most communities, especially communities like Acton, which have an established manager, an established strong manager, a manager with a very good contract. I don't think you'll have too many concerns going forward with working out the details of contract with your next town manager. So hopefully by Monday night, we're going to have a name that we will vet through the background checking, and we will begin, we'll talk to the chair about the contract deliberations and where your parameters are set, and your board will have to decide that.
Thank you. Are there, I guess, are there questions from board members? Peter?
I guess this is more for you, Janet, but where in this process does the public input come in? Is it during the interviews or after the interviews on Saturday afternoon, or how do we contemplate in getting input from the public?
Monday. The way Katie, Bob and I talked about this Saturday is people are welcome to come and sit and listen to the candidates, but it's just because, I mean, part of it is because of the time constraints. You know, even we are going to have challenges trying to ask questions and getting answers within the time allowed, but the idea is that the public opportunity to comment would be in-person at Monday's meeting, but as I said, at least in one of my email responses and here, people can certainly email us. I mean, there's nothing to preclude them emailing us whenever. I mean, as soon as they get the material that we've gotten and have questions, and some of the people will be doing their own little research, they, I'm expecting that we're going to get a lot of comments and questions, or whatever it is, from people in the community. So it's really, even though the in-person questions are not going to be to the candidates themselves, people can try to influence our, what we do by asking us questions or making comments to us. I mean, it is, it's not the way that a lot, a number of people would like it to be, but we just cannot stretch this out any longer. As it is, we lost some time because we had annual town meeting. And so it's, you know, it's a different ballgame. I don't, you know, I don't know what the conditions were like 10 years ago when we hired Steve Ladue, but these days, you know, I think it was 10 years ago, and so the generation of town managers who are now retiring are, were still planning to work for a while. It's just different today. There's just not the next generation of town managers stepping up or is easily available, and certainly not of the caliber that we're accustomed to in this town. So anyhow, but any other questions, comments from? Freddie, do you have a question?
Hi, Freddie Osmond. Where does the questions that committees or people sent in come into the process?
I know that we had a question that COD wanted to ask, and I think that Joan is planning to pose it. I don't know who the liaison is for your committee, because you had a transportation-related committee, but I mean, if you want to, you know, you can send your question to the board, and you know, if the board, if some board member is interested enough, we could just put that in, include that, but we'll see. It depends on what other questions board members want to ask. Anyhow, yeah. Yes.
So a few, Alan Nicholl, a few questions. The package that's being handed out with the background of the candidates and their answers to questions, are those public documents?
They will be available online in the same way that the final report is. I mean, the idea was you wanted the board to see this stuff and look, have a chance to look at it before everybody else gets it. If we had put it on before the meeting, then everybody else would have access to it before we'd even had a chance to look at it, but it will be put up. Lisa will take care of that. So it will be, yeah, it will be publicly.
Like tomorrow?
Yeah, oh yeah, for sure. She works miracles.
So I have a couple of questions about this. Obviously, this decision is the Board of Selectmen's, no question about it. You guys could just pick me to be the town manager. You could vote me in right now. So there's no question. I'm not saying that's a realistic scenario.
You're going to laugh.
So I'm not questioning your ability to do it any way you want, but it just seems like this is not a good process, even though time is short. And I'm not going to go into the history and the three-week delay and all that, maybe those were all good reasons, but I don't understand why, if you're going to come in on Saturday, why you can't give the public a half an hour per candidate to ask a couple of questions. If you don't want the public to be involved, then I think you should say so. But sort of saying that, oh, there just isn't time, so the public can't ask any questions of any candidates, so there's literally zero interaction. It just doesn't seem right to me. Now, if there's a good reason for that, but the time is not a good reason because Saturday is Saturday. You've reserved the room from nine to three. Why don't you just have each candidate sit there for an hour and a half? Do an hour for the BOS thing, and then a half an hour for any public questions? Maybe there won't be any. But this way, people who have their little interest areas can get up and ask a question of each candidate, and they can get, you know, maybe you limit the time, whatever, so as many people get to speak as possible. So that's my question to you, is why, you know, especially now that you've had someone drop out, there's only four people. So I mean, there's time to do this on Saturday. So I assume there's nothing that precludes the public input. Why don't you just allow public input on Saturday?
It was, it really is, I mean, it is the time. I mean, bear in mind that this is an extra meeting for us, and while we are, we recognize this is really an important responsibility, it is, it's a Saturday, and we're coming in to do this on the heels of a very long and tiring town meeting, but we're doing it because it's important. The public has had opportunities to weigh in at the, certainly, Town Manager Search Committee invited public comment about various issues, and my observation was that hardly anybody went to those meetings. But this is really, and it really is also because, as you say, this is our responsibility, so the interviews are really principally for our benefit, and public will have a chance to talk to us. They should be talking to us. I know the school committee has done things differently, but this is the way that the three of us decided that would be best, most efficient to address all the things that we needed to cover in the time that was allotted. It's not, as I said, it's not to everybody's liking. There are people who would like us to drag the process out a lot longer and be much, you know, allow everybody to ask questions freely, but you know, that's just not feasible. We have to draw the line somewhere. And frankly, you're disregarding the importance of the Town Manager Search Committee members who represent all different people throughout our community and have worked very long and hard to evaluate all these candidates and come up with, I mean, there's a certain amount of trust, okay? And, you know, it's just that that's, it's the way, it's a matter of just economy in dealing with the things that we have to do and the time we have, and yet still include people. I mean, technically, we don't have to include public comment at all, but we're doing it because that's...
You're not doing it.
No, but we are. You know, it's just that we're not doing it the way that you would like, you would like it to be done, but you're not in our position dealing with the decision that we have to make. And there are going to be compromises, so. But I'm telling you, you know, you have the information, you're going to be able to get access to the application material, you'll have all the information we have. People are very resourceful, you have the internet, you can do all kinds of research, you can send all kinds of comments and questions via email to us. You don't even have to come to the meeting on Monday. It's not limited to that. But yes, you're not, you're not going to be able to engage the candidates directly. Peter?
I mean, I was just going to, this is my own opinion, I, I've, you know, this is an awful tight schedule, I got to say. I mean, I understand all the reasons, I'm just still waking up from town meeting. We're trying to get enough sleep to make up for the time we lost at town meeting, but I'm going to be very hard-pressed before Saturday morning to Google these people and go through the resumes and come up with questions. Frankly, I'm working tomorrow. I have a commitment tomorrow night that was made months ago, and I'm expected to be here at nine o'clock Saturday morning, prepared to ask questions of candidates. I haven't even seen the resumes of yet. So, I mean, I'm willing to do it, that's fine, I can do it, I'll stay up late, I'll get up early, I'll do it, but I do think there is some value to seeing how these candidates react to interactions with community members. I mean, that is an extremely important part of the job, and to the extent that that interaction comes through questions directly to the candidates and how they respond, how they deal with them, even if the questions might be tough, I think that would be very valuable to us to try to make a decision. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Katie?
And I understand, Peter, because I have to work tomorrow too, but I, you know, again, we talked about the schedule and the process a bit, and the part of the...
I don't ever remember being involved in any conversation.
I think you might not have been at the meeting that we talked about it, but we did, and part of the problem, again, there was awkward timing of the new board happening and town meeting, and honestly, I mean, we weren't sure of town meeting, there was a shot on Tuesday night, the town meeting was going to go Wednesday night, so when we were scheduling this, we needed to schedule it Thursday just in case. And part of the problem is that these are, and what we had been advised, was that these were candidates that are, you know, advanced in their careers and that are working in towns that also have town meeting right now. So when we're trying to figure out scheduling, it's not just scheduling around our schedules, but also recognizing the fact that they are going through their own town meetings, which is why we ended up honestly going with a Saturday, that Bob had suggested Saturday, because all the candidates would be available on a Saturday, and many of them wouldn't have been available at other times. And I understand, you know, the kind of desire to have more public input. I think there was a lot of public input into developing, to the Town Manager Search Committee and developing the candidate profile and what they put into the ad and what they were thinking about in their interviews and what we'd be thinking about during ours. I mean, hopefully, everybody's reviewed the survey and all of that that they did, and I believe that's in the report as well. But, and I think people can email us questions, we've started to see those that they want asked, but you know, again, this is a decision for the board to make, and it's a tight timeline. And if we add a half hour to every person, we'd have to go an extra two hours, so we're already going nine to three, and...
We'll have to get supper.
We have everybody scheduled.
Well, our sleeping bags, you know, stay here, it's just like...
At this point, I don't know if we can change it, but... And the candidates, I mean, they've all been Googled and researched and everything by the Town Manager Search Committee. I mean, part of what our job was, was putting together people that, as Janet said, were publicly trusted and respected and diverse, you know, representing kind of diverse viewpoints and experiences from the community and putting together our search committee, and I thought that was a very important job, and I think we did a really incredible job if you look at who was on it and how, what they've done. And I trust that I would be happy hiring any of these candidates. I mean, that's what they had to put forward to us, people that they would be happy if any of them became town manager, but I understand, you know, that it's a quick turnaround, but that's just...
Yeah, and I was not intending to, you know, say anything about the search committee. I hold them in very high regard, and I think they did an excellent job, just being prepared by Saturday morning to, I mean, that's fine, I could do that, but...
I would add that I did, I did though, a number of times, I mean, when I explained what the process was going to be, I did tell everybody to save certain dates. I said, first of all, that we were going to be doing something right after, right after town meeting, so don't make any vacation plans and all the rest of it. And, you know, and as things started to form, I think that I was hoping that people would have, would not make any changes in their schedule so that they'd be able to devote a fair amount of time to this undertaking. I was a little bit surprised to find out you decided to go back to work right after town meeting, or during town meeting, or before town meeting, but I thought, well, okay, maybe it's, you were desperately bored and you couldn't stand it any longer, but it's just that this is, you know, this is a priority. Certainly for me, it's a priority, and because I knew that we were going to have to move fairly quickly, I was prepared to, you know, deprive myself of certain comforts at home and all that, including sleep between town meeting and this, in order to get the job done properly. So anyhow, that's, this is the decision we made, and it's, I know it's, we've already heard from one other person who's not happy with it, but you know, this is the decision we've made, and frankly, in order to have the thing proceed orderly, we'd really want to stick to the proposed schedule.
Okay, well, I'll just say one more thing.
Sure.
The last, I did do a little research on the last process. I agree, it was a different time, but members of the Board of Selectmen did site visits. They went to visit the towns where these people were working. They seemed to have a lot more interaction with the candidates. The public was able to participate and ask questions, interviews were done over three or four days. It just seemed to be a much different process, and I think, I was for one surprised that the public is not being allowed to directly interact with the candidates. And I agree with Mr. Berry's comments that you, it's good to have a community input, but I think it also provides additional information for the, you know, about the candidates, and especially when you have such a shortened process. I mean, you might be able to make the argument that if you were going to do this over two weeks, you'd have plenty of interaction with these candidates, you'd feel really comfortable, but on the other hand, this is so quick, you're going to literally meet them each for one hour, and then you're going to vote on Monday. I mean, there's not much time for you guys to form an opinion and an impression of these people. And I just, I know on the school side, they always say the school committee's number-one job is to pick the superintendent. I don't know if that's, probably not exactly is true with the Board of Selectmen, but it's probably one of your top, you know, things that you have to do. So I just feel like this, I understand that time is short, you don't want to lose more people, but to, you know, Katie said she's already committed from nine to three on Saturday. She doesn't want to do an extra two hours. No, I'm not saying that as a criticism, I wanted to say that nine to three is, you don't have to change that schedule. Nine to three works, and that allows a half an hour for every citizen to ask questions, and you'd still be done at three o'clock. So I'm not really sure why there's this idea that you cannot have community input and you're going to stick to your guns. So maybe it won't work out great, maybe we'll get another Steve Ladue, and everyone will be happy, but if we're not happy with the selection, you might come back and say, this is where the mistake was made. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also note that the process, prior process 10 years ago was very different in that the Board of Selectmen did, they didn't use a consultant to do, they did a lot of the work themselves, so they were very engaged in all the minutia. You read some of the minutes of the meetings back then, and they spent an inordinate amount of time talking about the candidates, and I, you know, I don't know how much time they actually required, but it was just a lot of effort on their part, which I think we made a little bit easier for ourselves by involving somebody with the Town Manager Search Committee, and they in turn used a consultant anyhow, but it was just different, so, yes.
I want to just try to reassure you, especially Peter, that it's not as bad as you think. Once you get your hands on the application material, I think you'll find a degree of comfort. The essay questions were limited to, I believe, four questions, I can't remember exactly, but they were limited to two or three paragraphs each, so it's a pretty quick read. When we had to sit down the first time with 57 applications, I know I lost sleep the night before, how are we going to do this? And this came out all electronically to us also, but it was amazing that as a group, you know, put this over here, this one, this one, this one, and pretty much, I'd say, 90% of the time agreed. And each time we went to the next phase, it was without any real disagreement of the process, and I think you will find the gut factor to be working, and it's not nearly as overwhelming as you think it'll be.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Nancy.
Mr. Gowing.
Mike Gowing. Just as a consideration of what Ellen's saying, I realize that the timeliness is necessary because of the fact that the job search out there from many communities are tapping the same candidates. And perhaps people would think that Acton would be the shining jewel that would attract all the candidates, but the candidate that ended up going someplace else took less money than we were offering. So, it isn't always about the, the money or the circumstance, each person is different. However, as a consideration, I'd like to offer that we could carry the interviews live on TV, and if you guys had access to laptops where people could send you emails with, email questions that you may be able to fit in. You may or may not, but that way at least the watching public or the, those who can't make it to Town Hall could watch it and still be able to have some, some input into what's going on. So, I'll, I'll throw the offer out there.
The, the meeting is gonna be covered, right? Acton TV will be, will, will be broadcasting it, I guess, so...
Yes.
But the other part is if people want to send questions during our meeting, yeah, that we could have the option of, of incorporating those questions into our questions, and, and then we'll end up going two hours because we're incorporating other questions anyhow. Yes, Mr. Cadwick?
Yeah, I, I won't repeat anything that's already been said, but it is a very compressed timeframe and interactions with people would be a good thing. I do wanna just say that the people that have been recommended have known that they're the finalists for some time, so extend your time a little bit. I, I know you already said you're not gonna do that, but it's not a surprise to them that they're finalists, they've known this, 'cause that's how the interviews were set I would also say this was a great group, they were very wise, they listened to me. Now, we all got drawn really well, and, but the fact that, you know, we chose them is not the end of the story. I mean, you have to make a choice among four of them, and there's a lot of information out there, and what I was really got up here to suggest is that you think about some sort of way for people who will undoubtedly begin to look into the backgrounds of every one of these people between now and Monday, and then whoever you picked on Monday will get extra scrutiny, and they will come up with all kinds of information, some of it correct, a lot of it not true. Think about setting up some kind of way of people who come up with a question or something that doesn't make sense to them to get an answer, because there's a lot of information out there, and it can create a lot of frustration when there's no way to check it. There will be this time period where Bob's doing, and his company is doing, the background check, he mentioned two weeks. During that period of time, I think the people in Acton should be able to get their questions answered, whatever they come up with, to eliminate any misinformation. I mean, obviously, this group didn't come up with anything to prevent these candidates to be submitted to you, but there is a lot of stuff out there, and I'm just concerned that that will remain sort of unresolved. So, if you can come up with a mechanism, I'm repeating myself, of having people go someplace to get legitimate answers to whatever questions they have, I think that would help.
Can I ask a follow-up? Charlie, do you mean outside of, say, emailing us and then we would communicate the answer to them? 'Cause I think that's, you know, what I would imagine, but...
If you want to take that on, I mean, sure, but there could be a lot, a lot of that. I mean, you decide, but whatever you decide, make it known.
Are you talking about maybe like a Q and A? I mean, as you start getting questions in that sort of repeat, then you start developing a, a response that explains whatever it is that keeps coming up, that sort of thing?
I don't have anything specific in mind.
But you're just concerned that people are gonna have questions and they need to have them answered, and certainly, I think, are you, are you talking about the four candidates or you're talking about when we pick, pick?
Between now and Monday, I'm talking about the four. After Monday, I'm talking about the one.
Right.
And there's still a lot of people out there who don't know that we're here today, you know, and they won't know until Monday that you've already selected somebody. I mean, this, this is fairly quick, and yes, it's the agenda's been out there and all the rest, but I'd be willing to bet a significant expensive dinner in a fancy fast-food restaurant to... That's, a lot of people just don't know that this is, that, you know, you're scheduled, and when they find out, they're gonna say, what, who? And start looking, because, you know, hundreds if not thousands of people will be out there looking up information, putting stuff on Facebook or whatever they do. I don't do that. But that's, you know, it's just, I, I, I think it would be good to have a clear answer to, what do they do if they have a question? Should they send it to you? Fine, if you wanna take that on, but maybe you should designate somebody to handle it. John knows how to do it. You know, just, just, I'm thinking aloud, frankly, but I'm just concerned that this is happening so quickly that there will create a vacuum of information for a while.
For the vast numbers of people that are gonna be interested, it would be great if that, if people were, were interested, yeah, enough, and we were besieged with, with questions and all kinds of comments.
May not happen, I don't know.
But I, I think the trouble is, a lot of us are already heavily engaged in town government, and we tend to assume that other people are just like us, and, and yet, you see what happens at town meeting, the attendance, and, you know, even voting in the, you know, at the ballot, it just, gee, what are you, I guess everybody else who, who's sitting at home is very happy, right, with whatever's going on that keeps the services going and keeps those tax bills going out too, but...
Well, you mentioned the, you know, the meeting we, the, the search committee held right in this room, hoping to have a lot of people come. It was a rainy day, but we were struggling to get a few people to say anything, so... But there was more that came later over time, but there was time for them to think about it. This is very short, and when people realize that the Selectmen have chosen the next town manager, they may say, what happened? And, you know, have some process of, in place to handle that, that's all I'm suggesting.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna make sure that, to understand, I, my memory from Commission on Disability is that committees were asked to submit questions, is that right? Were committees? Because what I wanted to say was that it seemed sort of unfair if people, if the Selectmen are able to ask three questions, if their committees had sent in questions, it seems a shame for them to have to own those questions. But I, I don't remember what the process was, just, just so people can hear.
We asked all of the committees to send us representatives to the Town Manager Search Committee if they cared to. We invited them also specifically, not, not just a general invitation, but specifically to the committees, to feel free to come to the public forum. The Committee on Disability, as a matter of fact, did have a designated person come, Danny Factor, and he did ask questions on their behalf. So, to, to respond to your question, we did do it, we didn't get a lot of traction, but, you know, we were more than happy, anytime, we were more than happy to hear from anybody.
The way, I guess, the Commission took it very seriously and sent people away to design a question that they thought was gonna be asked at the interview, and brought everybody's answers together and tried to really come up with a question that synthesized all of the questions that people came up with, so...
Jen, I have a question. Why, I mean, maybe you know, Joan, why the, who told the Commission to develop a question for...
That's where I was wondering where it came from. I thought that, I thought maybe we had gone on an email, would committees please send a question? I, okay, I don't, I don't know how, that's, that's why I was sort of curious.
I have the question, and I will ask that question.
But I, do you happen to know, Joan, since you're the liaison, why did the Commission get the impression that it was supposed to develop a question? Did somebody tell the Commission that, or...
I mean, it could have been because the Commission is particularly interested because what you heard at the session, which I, by the way, I listened to it online, I couldn't attend that night, but I heard every time you looked into the camera, Charlie, and said, where are you all, you're probably watching on TV? So, I think because the town manager right now is assigned to be the ADA coordinator...
Right.
There's a particular interest in making sure that the town manager is sensitive to issues. If, if we change who is the ADA coordinator, that wouldn't be as relevant, but right now there is particular interest by the C O D that they could work well with him, or her.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? I don't know if the board would like to talk about, a little bit more about the proposed process. I don't know if anybody else has comments about the proposal to limit public participation on Saturday. Yeah, if you have any thoughts, Bob, please share them.
I've been through, I'm guessing, twenty of these searches here in Massachusetts. There is a difference, and I've seen it in my communities where I was a manager, vis-à-vis communities that have worked to hire a new manager or hire a new town administrator. The process is different in some cases on the school side. The schools have a different way of, not all, have a different way of seeking out and hiring a town admin, a town administrator, a school superintendent. And they do engage, much as Ellen has suggested, they do engage a lot of the public back and On the other hand, I have not seen that process in the search for town administrators and town managers. And I give you a good perspective, I've hired three administrators, I was a Selectman in my small town of Tingsborough, in between my career changes, so I've hired them. I also participated in a search for the town manager up in Derry, where I was one of the applicants, Derry, New Hampshire.
Isn't that a conflict of interest?
So, I've been around. And Derry, New Hampshire did engage in the process that Ellen is talking about. They had the three finalists come to the community, day before interviews, they had an open session at, at, I think it was Town Hall, where the public was invited to come in and meet the three final candidates and, you know, talk in general to them. The Selectmen have the final decision, as they do here, and the next day, during the interviews, the Selectmen, and the Selectmen only, chose the next town, they have a town manager up there in Derry. Wasn't me, but they have a town manager up in Derry. That's the only instance I've seen in thirty years, either as a appointing authority or as someone who was a town manager and a town administrator, and now a retired town manager, town administrator, doing searches for new managers and administrators. The Derry instance was the only time I've seen it done for managers and administrators. I, I agree with Ellen, I've seen it done differently for school superintendents. And I think what, what, I think we're missing, and I'm not sure why we're missing it, these folks are the public. You appointed them to do a search, and believe me, they did an intensive review of every one of those candidates, and they were your eyes and ears out there in the community. You heard Pat allude to the fact, and believe me, when we prepared the ideal profile and challenge statement, they gave me a document about fourteen, fifteen pages long on comments they received from the public. And we tried to develop, in concert with the committee, a good, meaningful, ideal profile and challenge statement for the town of Acton. So, those are just observations for you to contemplate.
Bob, I was wondering, how long did that, that little chat session in Derry take? I mean, with the public? I mean, they, they had all three candidates and what, was it free-for-all? Just loudest voice predomin, you know, dominates the conversation and just, somebody, or did...
It, it was an evening, it was an evening.
Yeah.
And during the day, they invited us during the day and stayed for the evening. We, we, the three of us paired up, if you will, with the department head. I remember I was with the Department of Public Works Superintendent, took me around town, showed me all around town. One of the other candidates was paired up with the police chief, took him around, showed him around town. I'm not sure what benefit that was, I, I didn't have a choice as to who I was paired up with. So... I, I wasn't in the back of the police cab. So, I don't know about the benefit of that, but they did it that way. They haven't done it since, 'cause we've done a search for Derry in two thousand and two thousand and fifteen, and they did not do it the same way.
So, what, did they do something more along the lines of what you're doing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, just a quick follow-up to what he said. So, obviously, we have to let, let the record show that Bob was not selected in Derry. So, he's obviously biased against that.
Alan, I'm glad I wasn't, by the way.
You're not in the microphone, so... So, I mean, I just find it curious that this process is never used, except it was used in Acton ten years ago, the process I'm talking about. And if you read the minutes, the public comments were extensive. I mean, they were as long as the Selectmen questions, it seemed like. People asked a lot of questions of the candidates, there was a lot of interaction. So, I, I would say that we have a history of having that type of interaction. I would also say that the school example, I agree, schools are different, 'cause you know, you're parental and kids and all that stuff, but the school has the same process. They have a huge selection committee, illustrious people, involved people, community members, teachers, administrators, I mean, they get every single interest group on that selection process, and they go through a very similar process, and they come up with two or three candidates, and you can easily say, well, why have public input? I mean, they have all these stakeholders involved, including members of the public. So, I, I actually don't think the process is much different. The question is whether you really value the community input, how important is that to you? And I agree, in a very shortened process, it's very tough, but I see no reason, honestly see no reason, why you couldn't give each candidate half an hour for public questions. I think that'd be a sign of, you know, a different type of feeling that you, you would be giving to the public about, you know, valuing public input. I mean, you can't, Janet, you can't bemoan the fact that people don't show up to give public input and then not, not have a session where you allow public input, you, you can't have it both ways. So, thank you.
But I can.
A quick question. Just remind me, have they, has this committee talked to them in person and interviewed them, those four candidates? So, for how many hours have you spent talking to them?
The, it was a formal process, it's described in the committee charge, which is in the material you got today. We met for an hour with each of the candidates who we chose to interview, there were eight of them. We had a set group of questions that we asked every candidate, and then, as time permitted, and an hour is a lot of time to get a feel for a candidate. As, as time permitted, we did follow-up questions, again, equal time to equal members of the committee. So, we did have an opportunity to speak with each of them.
Okay. I was just thinking about what, what it takes to really get to know how it is to work with some... work with somebody. So they will have been in conversation for a total of two hours only. It somehow sounds small to me for such a big thing. And I remember when Selby was hired, I remember hearing there was sort of a, some kind of activity or group activity that went on where you related, what did you?
It's a situational, you have a hypothetical situation and he's, he's tested and he's asked to decide what he would do or whatever it is. I mean, they do that, they use that approach for, you know, new fire department employees too. They, they put them into a sitting, a situation, and they have to figure out how to work out whatever the problem is. And so, as opposed to just having them sit there and answer questions.
And I just wonder if there's value of that for a town manager. I, I haven't thought about it as much as you all have. And I'm really glad, despite the lack of public input that we are talking about, when I think about it, having the committee, having worked so hard, you've been sort of doing the public input for us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor. Freddie, one other thing you should keep in mind, we did our search on the candidates and interviewed them. There was a search within the search where they knew an awful lot about us, the town and, you know, what goes on, driving around town, stopping into places, library, and so I'm looking for some very interesting observations, so keep that in mind as well.
Okay. And what seems a little awkward is, I don't know, because open meeting law, I mean, your meeting, you met an executive session and talked about them. So if you have a favorite, like if, if it's obvious to all of you that one out of the four stands, I'm sort of curious whether that kind of information was shared, will be shared with the selectmen.
We, we did not rank the group that we gave to you. We did not rank any of the, any of the candidates in any way. It was a collaborative process. We came to consensus throughout, regardless of what we were talking about. We could have been talking about whether to use blue pencils or red pencils. It was an extremely collaborative process. We, if people had misgivings about a specific candidate from the group, generally, we found that we were persuaded enough to remove that name from our consideration. We did not guarantee that we would have 10 people to interview. If eight rose to the standards we felt we needed to meet, and those are in that challenge statement, we worked with eight. We could easily have sent you three candidates, four candidates. There were arguments on both sides. We decided, because again, of the pressure of the market environment, to send you a full slate of five. We did not want to end up in a situation where you were choosing between two. And I would say, other than that, we didn't rank anything. We had very, very good input from our consultants in terms of the risk factor of sending you a name that we weren't very comfortable with. I can't say 100% sure, none of us are. Everybody on this committee has time and energy to Google people, to go to their towns, to visit them. We did a lot of that kind of thing. We knew people in the search. Among us, we probably knew a good 15% of them from one place or another. I mean, this, the input that we got from MRI in terms of the non-quantitative aspect of anybody's professional career was very strong and we took it to heart. We could have loved somebody on paper, but if we got advice that there were some issues, we listened. The first statement on the challenge, and I, I'd ask you to open that up and look at it, is integrity. And that's what we were looking for. It came to us from the community, it came to us from the staff, it came from our own intrinsic feeling. We believed that of all the things we had to consider, that was the most important.
Okay.
You know, it's really good to be able to talk about these things, which of course illustrates how important time is and it's such a shortened process. So I think something that, I think Bob said this, and obviously the, the committee that you guys put together is excellent, but I think Bob said that, you know, this is sort of your community, this is your community group. So I guess my question is, I'll ask it to Janet, now that the committee is done, what they did in executive session obviously is not going to be publicly released or, you know, the discussions, et cetera, but it seems like there's a very good body of knowledge here. And I guess I'm wondering, legally, can you guys, since you appointed them, can you meet with them individually and say, "Okay, let's have a coffee and let's talk about candidate X, candidate Y"? I know that they didn't rank them, but to just have a one-hour interview and then to base your whole decision over that one-hour interview seems like you're not using all the resources you have available. So I guess I would wonder if you couldn't, you know, each of you just schedule a meeting with one of these guys after Saturday or before Saturday or on Sunday or Monday or something and just, for an hour, just say, "Let's go over these people. What do you think about A, B, C, D?" Because you might find out, oh, candidate A is a real, you know, take-charge person, they're going to really do, you know, they're going to take, take over, blah, blah, blah. And you might say, "Oh gee, that's not the type of person I want." Or it could be the opposite. You know, candidate A is going to let you guys do all the work. Oh, well, I really want someone who's more active. So I guess my suggestion is, if it's allowed, maybe you should, you know, if you're not going to allow community input, which I still disagree with, and this actually might even, you know, be a good idea anyway, is to somehow meet with these people and, and get their feedback on the candidates, other than what's submitted to in writing. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Joan, you have something?
Well, I was just going to say, I think it was 40 years ago, the board I sat on hired two town managers in that nine-year period. And I must say that I'm very impressed because I know all these characters out here. And I'm very impressed with the work they've done. I understand the time schedule and John, who sat on that committee, is now on this committee and I'm sure he can give us some input in our deliberations. So I'm happy with the process as it stands at this moment.
Thanks.
And also, hopefully, many of you will be able to attend on Monday as well or email us or add comments there as well, too. I mean, if you didn't come to consensus, but individually you have a favorite there at this point, of course, allowed to share that information with us. And then that's also more public than if we're just meeting with them one-on-one. So I would hope, I know you've been at endless meetings, but if, if anybody wants to come on, on Monday as well and add any input or things that you learned additionally from our public interviews on Saturday, you know, that, that would be great. But again, it's a real boon toss to have John now on this committee, having gone through, we decided not to put a selectman in the initial process, but in an odd way, it worked out that he, he is here tonight and, and on this board and able to offer kind of any additional insights you might have from that process. But, you know, again, I, I think the charge was that you had put forward names that they would be happy if any of them were hired. And I trust very much that that's what happened. And so I, I feel very comfortable, as Joan said, with, with the candidates that we'll be looking at. And I'm just excited to start tonight and spend a very exciting Friday night reading a lot of information and Googling some folks, so. My boyfriend will be real happy that that's what we're doing Friday.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
Yeah, I feel like I'm in my, have my Mother Tea hat on tonight because I want, I want to reassure Alan, what we know about each of these candidates, we learned from their cover letter, their resume, their essay question answers, and our one-hour interview with them and the answers they gave to us, which you're also being given. So everything that we know about them, you will be given in material. And we don't know anything beyond that. And, and again, it's the gut factor. Believe it or not, it's easier than it seems it's going to be. But you have all of the material, you will have all the material that we had that allowed us to choose these candidates. And I think you'll find that it's pretty easy to come up with a ranking.
Thank you. Yeah, Joan?
Yeah, I think, you know, one other point. Alan, the, the four remaining finalists are all very strong. They bring considerable strengths. Not, none of them are perfect. I mean, you can find a weakness or a shortcoming. And I think you just have to trust the board. Peter's been a selectman for, for seven years, Janet for eight years, five years, a thousand years. And, you know, they know, they, they know what they're looking for and, you know, they, they've observed town managers and, you know, you know, the strengths, the type of individual and, you know, you have to go with that intuition as well. That's a key component.
All right. Bob, closing remarks or?
If you've accepted Pat and the committee's report, then I have a schedule for you. We have the packages to distribute for some homework for you. And again, I'll just close by saying it, it's been an enjoyable process for us. We actually like these people and we hope they like us. They did their homework, is what I'll tell you. And again, most of it generated from them, not from us. We advised them on certain folks that we know of and they made the final decision. So your public committee is forwarding you four names that they vetted. And with that, I can distribute some material for you. It's up to you.
Great. That would be, that would be fine. Yeah. I'm looking forward to it. I actually love reading stuff, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you. And, yeah, and thank you, committee members, again, for all your, all your work, so.
And as a note for everybody watching, Lisa, this will be online tomorrow morning, right?
Yeah.
Or tomorrow, what?
The town meeting report is actually online.
Oh, with all the, this packet? Yeah, so this will all be available tomorrow morning on the website, so everybody should take a look.
Janet, while you're distributing, just a quick mechanical point. Make sure that people know, who are watching, who the four names are and/or vice versa, who the one that's on the list is no longer a candidate. That may not be so obvious to everybody who's been listening. So, you know, so that they know that the first one is no longer a viable candidate.
Are you, are you talking about reading it out loud? Because Pat read the list and explained that Mr. Colangelo was.
Yeah. But just, just to put it somewhere so that people know which four are the ones that are going to be interviewed Saturday, which four names they should look, should deal with.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Is there, is there any further business here? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, you moved. Okay. So Joan moves and Katie seconds?
Shake things up, huh? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed abstaining. Thank you.